Okay, welcome to this afternoon's work session. I'm ahead of myself. Regular scheduled meeting. We will have our invocation from Pastor Jeremy Tuck of Living Faith Tabernacle, and it will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would, please stand with me.
If we could all bow our heads. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you, God, for the opportunity to pray in this setting. And God, today we lift up each Commissioner to you by name. We lift up Commissioner Anderson. We lift up Commissioner Franklin. We lift up our Chairman Turner. We lift up Commissioner Hambrik. And we lift up Commissioner Davis. As they continue to serve this city, we pray for strength, creativity, direction, protection. And we thank you, God, for all that they continue to do. God, continue to cover our law enforcement, continue to cover our parks and recs, our teachers, our educators, and the folks who go out every day to stand on the front line to protect this community. We pray for Clayton County, that you continue to cover us and keep us in these perilous times. And we thank you, God, for the tumultuous service that they continue to offer to our community. And we ask God that you continue to keep us and cover us, and we thank you, God, for everything that you continue to do for us this day. And as we conclude this meeting, as we conclude this prayer, God touch this meeting, allow it to be productive, and allow it to be forward-thinking for the next thing that Clayton County is going to do. And I thank you, God, for this county and this community in Jesus' name. Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen.
Welcome to our April 19th, 2022 regular business meeting. The first order of business is the adoption of the agenda. Do any board members have any amendments?
Yes, I'd like to take item four separately.
All right, we're moving...
And item five separately. That's 21-293, and also 19-127.
Okay, Madam Clerk, you clear on those two?
I'm clear.
All right, also, and this is going to require a vote, take off of the zoning hearings, the last item, 40, it's Resolution 2279, to initiate a text amended amendment for the TOD that we spoke about a while back. I would like to put this on the consent agenda. This does not require a public hearing, and it also has to come back to us at a later date for a public hearing and for a vote. And I've offered that up as a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, second by Commissioner Hambrik. Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Are there any others?
Yes. Hold on here. I would like to move number 14, which is Resolution 62-22267, number 14.
Okay.
Regarding the tourism, move it to the regular agenda. Number 21, which is Resolution 74, to the regular agenda.
All right, that's Resolution 22-22-67, and you said 21, item 21?
Yes.
Resolution 2022-74 will be on the regular agenda. Any others? All right, hearing none, I'll take a motion for the adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Our next item is a proclamation. Lovejoy High School's 2022 Women's Basketball State Champions, presented by Commissioner Felicia Franklin.
Well, it's not quite a proclamation, but we got Breonna Preston, Kira Peterson, Ayanna Boyd, Ja'Kayla Harrison, Kamaya Mudro, Leila Hood, Laina Foster, India McIntosh, Asia McIntosh, Tyana Preston, Ayanna Weaver, Morgan Williamson, Torianna McGee, Chanita Foster, Lamar Harris, of course, Coach Robinson, and then Coach Hawkins, Coach Lamar, and Coach King unfortunately is at a funeral today, but y'all need to get on your feet because these are national state champions, state champions. I'm just sitting here smiling because you all have some skills, and it's so amazing. Not only are you state champions this year, but you will also state champions in 2018 as well. Lovejoy brings the gold home. So once again, on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, I decided not to give y'all a boiling proclamation, but to give you actually a piece that is completed and made by one of our very own police officers, Captain Ivy, and we have a certificate for each and every one of you. I am so proud of you, and I look forward to you all playing for your universities and going on to the WNBA. Did I do that right? Help me, help me, help. Okay, but y'all gonna go play professional basketball, right? And not only that, you know what I learned? We got female coaches now in the NBA. So I know you have bright futures ahead of you, and I want you to know we'll be praying for you and always looking forward to your success. Here you go.
Yeah, we have a name for you. And we have a certificate for each and every one of you. We need to get Captain Ivy a raise. All right, so I don't want to cover up your shirt, so we'll just take a picture with your award. You can hold it up. And... I'm fine, but I'm going to say we'll take it off. If you're comfortable, only if you're comfortable. Only if you're comfortable. And I think your school system is optional now, right here, so we're going to be compliant with that. Wait a minute. We got a couple more. These are all for you all, but I don't want to mix up the names. Hazel will help you with the... Now, there's a special gentleman in the audience. Is this him?
Yes.
There's a gentleman that is representing us with the Key Club as one of the presidents. But before I bring him up, I'm going to bring up Councilwoman Rosanette Kirby, who is our councilwoman and also the school secretary for the City of Lovejoy. Isn't she awesome? She always makes sure we don't switch it around, but she keeps us informed of everything that is going on. I really appreciate you. And then there's a gentleman. Did he make it here today?
Yes, he did.
We have a scholar. Come on up, sir. Can you tell us about this scholar?
Eustace Yubak is actually the Uptown Governor for the Key Club in Clayton County, Spalding County, Fairville, and Henry County. First time ever in Lovejoy High School, so we're on the map now.
Congratulations. And we're not done yet. I heard he needed a little bit of money, right? Oh, yes. I know somebody in the audience that's going to sponsor you, and they're going to present you with a check, so they're going to sponsor you to go and represent Clayton County. Come on up, MT. All right. So we want to congratulate all the great things that are happening at Lovejoy High School. It is such a pleasure to know that you all are taking education seriously, and you are so competitive.
Make sure you see me? All right. All three. One, two, three.
Congratulations.
Correct? Because you got to pay for them yourself. Is that right, Coach? Well, what I wanted to do when I found out is just give you a check to help sponsor those rings, an amount of $300. So you all, you'll have to get your bags ready.
Thank you.
Enjoy.
Say it again.
It wasn't good. Yay!
Look at this picture.
All righty then.
The board will now hear public comments. Please state your name and county of residency for the record. Please speak clearly into the microphone. Speakers should be courteous, respectful, and not make any disparatory remarks or use abusive language when addressing the board.
Rosanette Kirby.
I am Rosanette Kirby, Councilwoman for the City of Lovejoy. I just wanted to say thank you very much, Chairman, Commissioners, for all you're doing for us. And I do want to uplift two things in the City of Lovejoy. We have a 5K coming up on April 30th, and we're just reaching out to you to see how you can support us. Fifty percent of this proceed goes towards Lovejoy High School in helping with the clubs and the many things that we're doing. I have flyers. I can leave it with some with you guys. And also, Lovejoy High School has something called the Caring Closet. And what we do, we help students that are in need. Oops, I said something wrong. Okay, it's called Lovejoy High School Caring Closet. This started at the beginning of COVID, when a lot of parents were out of work, they couldn't afford to close their kid and that stuff, and it's been continued. We're actually supporting 10 to 20 kids per week, wear sneakers, deodorant, toothpaste, mouthwash, socks, shoes, anything, coats. We did a coat drive, and it's been phenomenal. We're going through this, and we're asking for your help, anyone in the community. You can always deliver stuff to the Lovejoy High School, just mark Lovejoy Caring Closet. And this is open daily for students. And one of the biggest things to the ladies, sanitary napkins. So anyhow you can help us, we truly, truly appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, listen, we really appreciate what you're doing, especially for the kids and family. What I would like for you to do is provide our communications manager with that information so we can put it out, as well as those cards you have. If you would leave them on the front where people come into the front area or lobby area, they'll be able to pick that up as well.
Appreciate you. Thank you so much.
Real quick, I apologize. I neglected to let folks know that you were honored by your country.
Oh.
Yes, and you were honored nationally for the work you're doing in Clayton County. And so share with everyone where you're from real quick.
Okay, I am from Antigua and Barbuda, and I've started a nonprofit in New York City. I migrated from New York about eight years ago to Atlanta. I thought I was retired from corporate America, but I came here, and I don't know, it seems to follow me.
Oh.
So I tried to do my best, but I do actually help students internationally that needs to get into college. I walk them through from the beginning, they say yes, how to apply to their visa, help them with scholarships. And the Governor General of Antigua and Barbuda added me November, December 1st, which is Antigua's independence, as of, I forgot the name of the award, it's so prestigious, I can never remember.
Thank you.
But so, it was actually, well, awesome. I didn't expect it was like that. I just do this for my heart. I just love to help and give back whatever I can do, but not realizing people are really watching and seeing what I'm doing, but that's why it's always good to do your best. But I thank you all for what you're doing for us and what you continue to do for us. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Miki Garber.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. Chairman, I see you started with number four, but that's okay. I have two statements this evening. The first statement addresses transportation for Clayton County. To obtain its rightful place at the top position in the 11-county metropolitan area with our rapid growth and construction of new roads, let me suggest, no, let me demand, that with deceleration lanes and acceleration lanes where new businesses are going to be, let there be an extra area for rapid transit to load and unload, as to not hinder the flow of traffic at every bus stop. Second topic, mandatory trash pickup. Dumping, trash, and litter. Before you try to institute mandatory trash pickup, you must first define dumping. You must first define trash. You must first define litter. Mandatory trash pickup will not solve all three problems, if in fact, it will not even solve one of them. Do you have any questions on any two of my topics? Seeing there are no questions, I'm glad to see that you all agree with me. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Brad Baldwin. And Mr. Baldwin, let me say that this is for public comments, if you're waiting to hear, waiting for the zoning, you good?
Sorry about that question.
All right, Carol Yancy.
This is for the record due to all the unresponsiveness. Commissioner Anderson, I submitted to you November 20th an email with six questions. Two of the questions here that I have yet to receive answered. This county has been a tier one with a Title I school system status for more than 10 years. What are your goals, actions to change the status? Are you for or against mandatory trash pickup? Do you plan on conducting open forum meetings for District One residents regarding mandatory trash pickup? December 21st, you added to the regular agenda, adopted a delivery plan for mandatory trash pickup. You, along with two of your cohorts, voted in favor without conducting any county-wide face-to-face open forums for resident voices and concerns to be heard. In 2018, the countywide forums, all residents strongly opposed then and now. February 8th, Board of Commissioners work session, you stated, "We do have a, quote, 'we do have a plan, we just don't put it out there.'" February 15th, I submitted an open records request for access to inspect and copy of the plans you referenced. As of today, no response, so I submitted a violation complaint to the State Attorney General Office. Were the facts or statements that you made February 8th, were they truthful? If not, why are you refusing to provide the documents I requested through Georgia's Open Rucker Act? What and where are the plans? Throughout your term, short-term, as Commissioner, you have continually demonstrated to District One residents a lack of transparency, responsiveness, and competency regarding residence concerns, and become not trustworthy. You definitely operate as a puppet, but now we want to know who's pulling and controlling your streams. Would you like to respond to my questions now? Thank you.
All right, Madam Clerk, that concludes public comment.
Mr. Chairman, the next item is the Consent Agenda.
All right, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Davis. Any questions on any of the items? Hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, the next item is item number four, Request for Second Contract Amendment, ITB number 19-127. This is Jalisse Williams of Central Services presenting.
Good evening, Commissioners and Chairman.
Good evening.
The recommendation is to amend the contract with Score Photo Incorporated located in Kennesaw, Georgia, and this is to extend the contract term for one year from September 13th, 2022 until September 12th, 2023. And this is for ITB 19127 Sports Photography Services for Clayton County, Georgia. Funding is available through the Parks and Recreation Department's General Fund. Department recommendation and amendment are attached for your review and information. The request is for you to approve the recommendation, authorize the Chairman or his designated to execute all necessary documents, excuse me, to accomplish the intent of the contract and authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget accordingly.
All right, so motion. I'll make the motions. Is there a second?
Second.
Probably moved and second. Are there any questions?
Yes, I just wanted to find out, what can we do to try to get more small businesses into this space? Because I noticed it was coming out of Kennesaw, and that was really my only concern, because this is an area that I'm sure we've got some folks in Clayton County that live here and own businesses here who can kind of fulfill this. So I know y'all doing an amazing job. Thank you for the job you're doing. I just wanted to know, what can we do?
So we have just started a new program for e-online bids, and it is BidNet, and it's kind of national, and it allows more small businesses or local businesses to access our bids. We send it out to local vendors. We give courtesy emails.
Okay.
We've tried to reach everyone from small local businesses, so we tried, but this is extending because of COVID.
Got you.
You know, so when we put it out next time, hopefully we'll reach someone local.
Thank you. That's all. Thank you so much.
Any other questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
Next item is item number five.
All right. The next item is the Recommendation to Award, RFP 21-293 Grant Administrator for the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA funds, Small Business Grant Program Annual Contract. The recommendation is being made pursuant of Section 214 of Clayton County Code of Commissioners for General Purchasing Methods. The recommendation is for multiple awards to the responsive and responsible proponents whose proposals are determined to be the most advantageous meeting the specifications to I Parametrics LLC located in Alpharetta, Georgia, and MNA Law PC located in Norcross, Georgia. Each proponent will receive 6% of the total grant funds dispersed from the American Rescue Plan Act grant. Funding is available through the American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funds. The request is for you to approve the recommendation, authorize the Chairman or his designated to execute all necessary documents to accomplish the intent of the contract and authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget accordingly.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Probably moved and second. Are there any questions?
Yes. Once again, I understand you've already answered about the local businesses, but the other thing I have with this, we brought on an entire division, and we have people that are employees of our county. I have stated this since I've been on this board. We constantly have to spend additional money just to do certain things, and so for me, that was my concern. How much is it that we're looking at having to have this group or these two groups manage?
So the total is 6%. I think it's of $5 million, and I think I have Ms. Erica Rockwell that can explain more.
Ms. Rockwell.
Good evening, Chairman and Board of Commissioners. It's 1.5 million, which will be spent on this first round, and then there will be another 1.5, and then 2 million. So at the end of all spending, which I believe according to the CFO, it will be in 2023. It's a total of 5 million dispersed in ARPA funds for grants. So this first round, 1.5 million.
And so they're going to receive 6% of that?
Yes, as an administrative fee. Mm-hmm.
Any other questions?
Well, it's not a question, but it's a comment very similar to what Commissioner was saying. And I know you gave the presentation and all, and thanks, because there was a lot of confusion before, but I too thought that we would have had someone in-house that could do that and save that 6% or whatever, and give it to our small businesses, because that's what we are doing with this, right?
Yes.
Yes, and it could go toward, you know, the small businesses and all, so...
Yeah.
You know, I concur on that.
Yes. Yeah, when we got the announcement that the county received ARPA funds and... and the COO met with each department and said, how do you, what money are you requesting? Our typical pass-through for grants is the Development Authority, but when we met with them, they said that they just cannot administer something on this size. They don't have the staff, the county can't administer it, and so we got approved to go out for a third-party bid, and that's how we got to this juncture. So, but some.
Any other questions?
I do, because we were told initially that department that Madam Vice Chair is referencing, that that's their area of work, is the ARPA funding and sourcing that. Between the Finance Department, that department, I just have concerns with the fact that we're not able to get this process without bringing in a firm from outside to get it administered. I mean, but the vote is going to be the vote, because we got to get it into the hands of the small business owners. I don't want to hold up the process, but as a county, we can't keep growing and bringing on staff, but then saying, well, we don't have the skill to do it. It just doesn't fly, it really does not. Because we're going to be dealing with additional funding, dealing with care, we're still dealing with some CARES Act funded that may be left over, ARPA funding and so forth. And just to always say, well, we don't have the skill set, that's just not acceptable for me to the people I'm accountable for.
Well, and you're speaking of our grants department being disseminated the money. And, and I don't know, we would have to defer if ARPA will allow that. It was, it has to be through a development authority, and if they refuse, we don't have another choice.
But we brought, no offense, but we brought someone on full-time in the Development Authority position as a county representative. You serve in the Development Authority or just as, what are you, what's your position?
I am the Office of Economic Development under the Board of Commissioners. I don't work for the Development Authority.
Not anymore?
No.
Okay, I'm clear. I'm clear, thank you.
COO, you have something to add?
No.
My, my, my comment still stands though, unfortunately.
All right, any other questions? All right, thank you. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, the next item is item number 14, Resolution 2022-67, presented by Attorney Reed.
Good evening, Chairman, Madam Vice Chair and Board. Resolution 202267 is a resolution of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners authorizing the use of Clayton County parking lots located at 1837 in 1935 McDonough Road by Infinity Productions III LLC for the purpose of parking vehicles and equipment used in motion picture production for April 7th, 2022, to authorize the Chairman to perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of the resolution, to provide an effective date of the resolution or for other purposes.
All right, is there a motion? I'll make the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Probably moved and second, are there any questions?
Yes. My question is, and, and I noticed in the definition and, and, and information that was provided, that this would be at a, is it $1,500? For 24 hours or something?
So, the way that this occurred is that from time to time, we have production companies that want to use county property, and the Board gave the Chairman authority to, especially when time is of the essence, to be able to execute the contract on the front end, then bring it back for the Board to ratify at a later time. This Board ratified one agreement for this same location. After that, they needed an extra day, and so this just clarifies that they're paying us to use that extra day that occurred on April 7th.
And that was part of my question, what happens if the time goes over the 24 hours?
Yes, so if for some reason, let's say, on April 7th, they needed an extra day, they would come back, amend the agreement again, it would come to this Board for approval, whatever the final terms of those, but there's no contract that is for use of filming that this Board doesn't ultimately approve.
Okay, so now, are we responsible if something happens, or the equipment is stolen? Or what, does the county have a responsibility for any of that?
The terms of agreements usually, they provide, they are using county space. A lot of times, we require them to carry insurance that if they damage our property, that they're responsible for making sure that the property is left in the same condition that they had when they came onto the property. Anything that's related to their personal equipment, that's on them to secure. But our, our main concern is making sure that when they come onto the property, when they leave it, they leave it the same condition.
Okay.
And then they pay us to use.
Right, that's what I.
And just to add on to that, they also, on occasion, well, quite often, hire our local law enforcement officers to work part-time there, securing property.
Okay, thank you.
Well, this is actually in District Three, and the part-time officers are there 24 hours a day. The only thing I will say that I observed is they need to do a better job of cleaning up after themselves. I don't know if they just finished production, but there was trash, hot dog buns, hamburger buns everywhere, and I had to report them and get it cleaned up. So that's the only thing I have to say about it.
Any other questions, comments? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous.
Mr. Chair, I think there's a Councilman in the audience from the City of Riverdale, too, just to make you aware of elected officials. He's right there waving.
Still don't see him.
He's right in front of him.
Okay, okay, how you doing, sir? What was his name? I'm not familiar, I can't recall your name, sir.
Councilman Frank, uh, City of Riverdale.
That's right.
Thank you, Councilman Frank.
Councilman Frank, good to see you, appreciate you coming.
Chairman Turner, the next item is item number 21, Resolution 2022-74.
Resolution 202274 is a resolution authorizing Clayton County through its Senior Services Department to apply for and if awarded, accept funds from the congressionally-directed spending appropriations to expand senior services transportation, authorize the Chairman to execute any documents and otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of the resolution. It's authorize the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, all as may be required, to provide an effective date of this resolution or for other purposes.
All right, is there a motion?
Some moved.
Is there a second? Uh, second to motion, any questions?
Yes. When I saw this, I was excited, because people up at Frank Bailey have been saying, you know, that trips have been canceled, and all, because we don't have transportation, we don't have anybody to drive, you know, the buses. And all, we have the buses, don't have the drivers. So when I saw this, I was like, oh, gosh, now we can do the trips and, and all that. But then I said, this is more of a health agreement, is that correct? And is it for a year, or?
No, this is transportation for congregate and our medical transportation for seniors.
Right, okay.
It's to expand that.
Okay, well, what I'm talking about, remember back pre-pandemic? There were a lot of trips taken, you know, the seniors were going different places and all, and each time, I, I have at least heard of two different trips that had to be canceled because there are no drivers and all, so does this help that problem?
No, this does not help that problem. We haven't gone back to doing day trips yet because of COVID.
So no trips had, no dated trips, okay.
No, we, our plan is to go back to doing day trips in the summer when it gets warmer, because, you know, COVID won't be such an issue.
So do we have drivers, or would this?
We do not have drivers. This grant is not to address drivers.
We don't have drivers, right?
No, we do not.
But we don't have them during the summer?
Well, we have the positions posted to hire drivers, yes.
Yeah, see, I hear this when I go up to the center, you know, whenever I go, you know, they're asking me, you know, what's going on, you know?
Well, the positions are posted. We have reached out to the Clayton County School System to see some of the drivers that have retired from driving the school buses, to see are they interested in becoming drivers for us. This has been an issue across the board, all of our part-time positions, we are having a shortage with those. We have increased the salaries for the part-time positions for the bus driver. We're just kind of trying to wait and see, do we have anybody to apply for the positions?
Just want to make sure that this, you know, like I said, I was excited, thinking that this would help with that problem, too, but. Oh, how long, how long is this in effect? What's the time limit?
This grant is for, I think this grant is for a year.
Okay, okay.
So it will expand transportation that we have for day trips for our congregate program, because that's also an issue at Frank Bailey as well. I'm not sure whether they've mentioned that to you as well. Now, that is an area where we have suspended day trips because we do not have the funding to pay for transportation for that, which is why we're applying for this funding.
Okay, so after a year, hopefully we can continue that or get the funding?
Um, we will continue to look for funding. We just hired someone in our department that has a lot of background experience with that, and so he's a person that put this application together for this particular grant, and we are actively looking for other grant opportunities.
Okay, great, because I would hate for us to get something started, and, and, you know, they all get excited about it, and getting to the health appointments and all that, and then have to cut it out after 12 months.
Well, one of the issues that we have is like that with all of our grant-funded programs right now. All of the programs that we have in senior services that cover transportation, they are grant-funded. So if ever there's any moment that the grant is cut, we do have to reduce services. And all of the seniors that we have that enrolled in these services, we do provide them a notice and let them know that. So they understand that it's a possibility that at any point, the services could be cut back.
Okay, well, hopefully someone will apply for those jobs for the drivers, you know, for July and all.
Yes, we're working on it, we have a backup plan as well. We are going to work with MLB to continue to help us with transportation. They have a coach service that they have as well. So we are actively working to make sure that we can get back to day trips with the dri, with drivers.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Yes, not a question, but just to state, the service that we're providing, this is one of those things we really need to submit up through the ATL Transit Link Authority, because there, there are counties up north that are actually already in that pipeline, and those folks on that team have been assisting them with this very service. So I think part of it is because we have MARTA, we tend to allow MARTA just to present to the state, to that state authority, the services that we offer. But this is a service, as we hear, that we only have a contract for one year, but we're looking to extend it. That needs to be provided within the information that's going directly from our county, so that we can be in that pipeline as well. And Kane Williamson and Jonathan Ravenoff, who've already sent over to the COO to meet with him on, they can meet with you on that as well.
Oh, no problem, we definitely will look into it, any way that we can expand services. At no cost to the county, we definitely are always looking to do that.
Awesome, yeah, thank you.
My pleasure.
Any others? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, the next item is item number 26, Approval of the April 5th Regular Business Meeting Board Minutes.
All right, is there a motion to approve the April 5th, 2022 Regular Business Meeting Minutes? Is there what?
Some moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hambrick. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous.
Shouldn't that be one abstention?
Oh, who abst, oh, you, you are so correct. You are so correct. One abstention, that'd be the good old chairman.
Good.
The good old chairman, that's right. Wait, let me rephrase that. I'm gonna get you, I'll tell you. All right, all right, the next on the agenda is the Board Appointments. Our first Board Appointment is to the Department of Behavior, Health, and Developmental Disabilities. Deanna Williams' term will expire April 2nd, 2022. The Department of Behavior, Health, and Developmental Disabilities Region Three Advisory Board, new term begins April 2nd, 2022, expires April 2nd, 2025. You can only serve two consecutive terms, therefore, Ms. Williams is not, no longer eligible. This is at-large, anybody have any recommendations? Madam Clerk, have that for the next, next Board, I mean, hold it. All right, next Board Appointment is Code Enforcement. Mr. Garvey Chiles has resigned from the Code Enforcement Board, and new appointment will begin immediately. This appointment is a continuance term and will serve as an alternate. Is full Board Appointment or at-large, are there any recommendations?
Yes, I'd like to recommend Ms. Marie Grisby.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hambrick. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Uh, next Board Appointment is to Housing Authority. Ms. Rose Hall's term on the Housing Authority will expire May 11th, 2022. New term will begin May 11th, 2022, expire May 11th, 2027. Commissioner Hambrick.
Uh, yes, I would like to appoint Ms. Rose Hall to this position, Housing Authority.
Second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Next Board Appointment is to the Land Bank. Ms. Latrice Mitchell's term on the Land Bank will expire April 15th, 2022. New term begins April 15th, 2022, and expire April 15th, 2026. Ms. Mitchell has resigned and lives in District Four. This is at-large, are there any recommendations?
Yes, I'd like to recommend Ms. Judith Cotton-Williams.
Is there a second? Uh, second to motion, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Next Appointment is Land Bank. Ms. Tanya Lane resigned, and Commissioner Davis nominated, was the one who nominated her to replace her at the March 1st, 2022 meeting. Ms. McRiggs is moving out of Clayton County, cannot serve no, longer on the Board. Therefore, another Board Appointment is needed, this is at-large, are there any recommendations?
Uh, yes, I'd like to nominate Ms. Alexis Lee to be on that Board position.
Alexis Lee. Uh, second, the motion, those in favor, aye.
Can I have a question?
Yes.
Okay, is there a question?
Uh, yes. So how many positions are filled by the Commissioners?
Madam Clerk, how many people are sits, sits on this Board?
Um, let's see.
Because I do believe this is one of those where each Commissioner gets a pick, and the rest are at-large. And if they're at-large, whoever has a recommendation for an at-large appointment goes through the, that's right, goes through the process.
So I don't think that means that it has to go back to the person that nominated the person.
Nobody said it did, I said it was at-large, and Commissioner Davis threw out a name.
Okay, I'm just trying to understand.
So how many people on this Board?
Madam Clerk, can you, offhand?
Um, I would have to confirm with my files, but I believe it is about, one, two, three, four, five, six, either seven or eight members.
Maybe even more.
It was, there's one from each Board, from each Board member, and then there's one from the, from the city. So there's probably about nine or two.
I believe that there are 11 on the Board.
That sounds about right.
And I believe there's only four that are appointed, and I think there's five from the Commission. I believe there's only four that the Board appoints. And I believe the rest are filled by one member from each city.
So let me ask you, if it's only four that the Board appoints, that's four for each district. So I'd like to make a motion that, even though motion is already on the floor, I would like for us to hold this, because that's one of the things we discussed before with, when Ms. Brenda was still here, to analyze these Boards, because it's saying at-large, but yet, if you're seeing only four from the Board, and then you got two from one district, then that tells me already, we need to hold it and look at it.
I think there is five Board appoint, point, uh, positions, because I appointed Ms. Mitchell.
Only thing I'm asking is since, it's a consensus, from what I'm hearing, we hold it and we not guess, and we can all be certain that we're doing what we need to do.
Well, as you stated, there's a motion on the floor, unless Mr. Commissioner Davis wants to amend his motion, we'll take a vote, and there's no, no other questions.
Let me ask a question, what, what is the, who is making the at-large motions for folk? Is it the Commissioners?
I believe this Board, you all adopted a policy that if there is more than five appointees, that each of you all will have a, at least one appointee. If there's less than five, then it would be an at-large appointee. Or if there's more than five after that fifth one, then the sixth one or above would be at-large.
So since there are more than five positions on this Land Bank Board, then that means to me that all Commissioners and the Chairman would have a say in appointing a person to that, and also a second.
The way that the Land Bank is created, or the Land Bank is made up, is there are, I believe, four appointees from this Board, and then the remainder are, is one appointee from each of the municipalities. So even though there's more than, even though there's more than five on the Board, this Board only appoints four people. So that would mean that under your policy, you would have an at-large appointment for that.
Well, why would we have an at-large if there's five members on this Board, and I not have, have a selection?
The most that the county can appoint to the Land Bank would be four. So that's what, the way that you all, the way that the resolution of, um, creating the land bank, there were four appointees from the county, and the remainder were, uh, staffed from each, one member from each of the municipalities.
So how do we get at-large?
Because you all have less than five. You have less than five members that are appointed from the board of commissioners, which is why you all, um, you all decided as a board that you would, for any, um, board appointees where you all have less than five appointees from your board, it would be at-large. If you have at least five from this board, each of you all would be able to have an opportunity to appoint one person.
Well, I actually brought this before the board, when we drafted it, and the idea was not so much about each board member. It was having proper representation from each of the districts. And I know, um, there are new commissioners on the board, but I remember Madam Vice Chair, if she remembers as well, that was our concern because there are some boards that they had no representation from various areas throughout the county. So I can't amend the, um, you know, the motion that's on the floor. But again, I agree with, um, Madam Vice Chair and, um, the fact that we need to make sure that we're not guessing and that we're sure, because we have the third largest land bank in the U.S., so this is pretty serious. So we want to make sure that everything is looked at from an equitable lens, um, and, and not just a, um, you know, making sure that every area of this county, there are four districts, that has somebody represented on the board. So if we gotta tweak it to make sure that happens, then I'm fine with that. And the only thing I'm asking is that we just hold this because this is a serious mo- serious board. People gotta understand, these are properties, the third largest in the U.S. Properties that are not on, uh, we are not receiving any taxes for them, and this board will be able to do what they want to do with it, as we heard, once they vote on it, whether they give it away to nonprofits or do whatever. And everybody on, within a district needs to make sure they have somebody represented on that board.
Okay, it looks like the breakdown on the board is there are four positions that we are, that's given to us, and all four of those positions are at-large. They're not broke down by the district because there's only four, not five.
That's correct. And if the, this board decides that you would like to, uh, further amend your internal practice to make it so that if you have at-large, that, that there is a, uh, that, a, a member of that, uh, each member has a person representing that district, that's something that I can put together for you all to look at, and then you all can decide internally, uh, to adopt rules or procedures on your own, uh, that that's how you will, um, gather at-large appointments. But that will be something that you all can decide, if that's how you want to proceed.
Well, right now, we have a motion on the floor, so, uh, how do you want to proceed with your motion, uh, Commissioner Davis? Do you want to amend it, hold, and amend it to hold, or do you want to go for it with what you've?
Do we have anything in place right now?
There are.
Or I'm out of order with this motion?
No, I mean, right now, there is, uh, the way that you all have done it is that it's an at-large, so anyone can make a, um, a recommendation. It's just a matter of whether you've got the votes.
And the other thing is this motion has carried over for, I think this is the third consecutive meeting.
And that's fine. I, if you make a motion, I'll have someone to, so, uh, we can hold it.
Say again, Commissioner.
I said, I, I would suggest that we hold it and like, like you said, so we can make sure that we have some equitable equitability across the board and make sure that everybody's represented. Um, and so I'm just asking the same thing tonight as well.
Well, the spirit of that, that, what we're going on, that we're reading, was for that purpose, to make sure what we're doing tonight does not happen. Those were my specific directives when we put it in the email and we drafted it. And obviously, at times, there are holes. So this is a hole that needs to be filled, and it needs to be tweaked because otherwise, this is the most, one of the most important, important boards and authorities. We need to make sure there's equitability because we're operating outside of the spirit of that piece of legislation that I, we had drafted.
Chuck, is there anything stated that we have to call it at-large? Can we just take that language out or off?
That would be a good point.
And just let it be county appointees?
I believe the reason why it's demonstrated as at-large as opposed to, um, a particular district is because any of you all can make a decision as to who you would nominate for that particular district. If you were going to do specific to a particular, I mean, whether you say board of commissioners or at-large, it's not, it means it is not one district that is making that nomination, if that makes sense. To, to Commissioner Franklin's point, if you all decide that you want to make at-large or at-large appointments based on residence, I can put something together for you all to, to adopt. But right now, as we're sitting right here, that is not what you all have designated. Right now, you just said at-large means anyone can make the nomination and get a second, and if there's a majority vote, that person is appointed.
And Mr. Chairman, that's why we need to go back and look at it again and give us time to go through it, um, with you, with, um, with Mr. Reed. So we can make sure that, again, we have equitable, uh, representation across the board.
Well.
Call the vote.
I, I hear, I hear, uh, what everybody's saying, but again, this is Commissioner Davis's.
I called the vote.
You called a question?
Yes, she did.
You called one?
No, called the vote. For us to vote.
Okay. All right, did we, we didn't get a second?
Yeah, you seconded.
Well, my bad, we all just a conversation. All right, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose?
Nay.
Uh, three to it, uh, does not pass. So hold it. And hold it until, uh, we notify you to put it back on. That way, that'd give the board enough time to get with, uh, Mr. Reed to iron out how we make this work. All right. All right, next board appointment is to the library board. Mr. Emmanuel Adimo. Uh, term on the library board will expire May twenty-first, twenty-twenty-two. New appointment will begin May twenty-first, twenty-twenty-two and expire May twenty-first, twenty-twenty-five. This is the Chairman Turner selection, and I would like to recommend, uh, Yvette Dupree. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, is unanimous. Next board appointment is the library board. Ms. Deborah Jester has resigned from the library board. New appointment will begin immediately and will expire October nineteenth, twenty-twenty-four. Commissioner Hambrick.
Uh, yes, I would like to nominate Dr. Lawanda Palami.
Is there a second?
I second that.
Any questions?
There is. I have a question. I think the library board chair is here. Is there something we're missing? And I see also Madam Executive looking at us, giving us notes.
Yes, ma'am, come forward if you have something to add.
Hello, uh, Ms. Dupree is already on the board. I think that was the last, um, appointment.
Ms. Dupree was appointed on March fifteenth to fill Julie Pizarro's term.
Okay. Go ahead with the, uh, where we at, and give me just a second on that other one. Commissioner Hambrick. Uh, we got first and a second on that. Are there any questions? All right, here and none. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, is unanimous. All right, so on item thirty-two, Madam Clerk. Obviously. Yes, ma'am?
Oh, it's zoning, isn't it?
No.
Trying to come back to work. Good to see you.
Wow, 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 wow.
I'm just super excited.
I see. I see.
She's represented.
All right, since item thirty-two is null and void, simply because, uh, somebody, that person's already sitting on the board, then do we need to do anything about, uh, having taken that vote?
Um, you can make a, a, um, motion to amend the.
I don't have, I gotta go find my name.
All right, so, um, since she's already on the board, it's not of any really legal effect.
That's why I said it's null and void, so we can just move on past that and just place thi- this item thirty-two on the agenda for next board appointment, for next meeting.
Well, actually, let me change that because, um, I don't know when her initial term was.
Who's initial term?
Um, the, the one that, the seat that she has been appointed to. So there could be some confusion if her, um, if the seat that she's currently on expires at a date other than May twenty-first, twenty-twenty-five, then she could be appointed to a second seat that would have her be there in a longer place. So I think it'd probably be cleaner to, uh, make a, a motion to, um, with, um, a motion to amend to, um, withdraw your recommendation for her filling this particular seat. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Can, can I ask, can we not guess? I think the two people are here from the library board. I think they have that information. Is that okay?
Do they know when her, her seat expires?
Oh, they do. They have all that information.
I have the information.
And the, and the clerk.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. Madam Clerk, what, what information do you have for us?
My information is she was appointed on March fifteenth to spell the unexpired term of Julie Pizarro. Her term expires on June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four.
Okay, so then, in that case, I would definitely recommend that you would, um, make a motion to, um, should we send the appointment to this particular seat? Because otherwise, she would be appointed to two seats with two different terms.
All right, so I'm gonna make a motion to rescind, uh, the board appointment for Emmanuel Adimo, Adimo. Apologize for his, for messing up his name.
Second.
I haven't finished yet, ma'am.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Uh, for the appoint, for the appointment of Yvette, uh, Dupree, I would like to rescind that. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any questions? All right, here and none. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, is unanimous. Madam Clerk, just hold that for next meeting.
I'm clear. Right, the next. Items are zoning hearings. Citizens may speak for or against an item that is considered by law to be a zoning decision, and each side will have ten minutes pres- to present its case. In the event there is more than one speaker per side, speakers must divide their time in order to complete their full presentation within the ten-minute time allotment. When the time runs out, the speaker will be expected to immediately cease speaking and to leave the podium area. Applicants or citizens speaking in favor of an item shall speak first. Applicants in zoning ordinance cases shall have the right to reserve time for rebuttal. Opponents of a zoning decision item shall have no right of rebuttal. When speaking, speak directly into the microphone and begin by saying your name, address, and name of any organization you represent. Abusive, profane, or derogatory language will not be permitted.
Now my turn.
Now your turn.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I am Casey Kerzik. I am here representing your planning staff. It's been a long time since I've back in this one.
I'm sitting here trying to figure it out.
It looks a little different, but it still feels the same.
Okay, we on the same page now?
Yeah.
All right, pr- please proceed.
Right, uh, Mr. Chairman, I do want to clarify that items number thirty-four, thirty-five, and thirty-six are tabled until the July nineteenth meeting.
All right, is the applicant here? Or representative? Please, if you can come forward.
Just to endorse and break the vote.
And that's why I want to make sure you speak into the mic and, and say that you agree to, uh, table it until that date.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Brad Baldwin from the Heck Walker Law Firm, representing the applicant. And we do request that items thirty-four through thirty-six of the agenda be tabled for, uh, three months to the July meeting.
Okay, thank you, sir. Uh, what are these items? Uh, District One, so Commissioner Anderson, how would you like to proceed?
That is okay with me. That's fine.
Okay, the motion is to table it until when?
July, you said July nineteen? Nineteen, that's correct. So the motion is to table it to July nineteenth.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose, is unanimous.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, the next item is item number thirty-seven, BOC twenty-one oh seven dash zero one three six, which is a conditional use permit to allow for the expansion of an existing place of worship.
Thank you. I'm just gonna move this forward a little bit. Okay, so your first one here is BOC twenty-one zero seven dash zero one thirty-six, and this is a conditional use permit application. The applicant, Jerry Robinson, is requesting a conditional use permit to expand an existing place of worship. The site itself has approximately nine acres, and it is currently zoned your agricultural district. The addition itself will be approximately two thousand square feet. That will allow for the increase in their numbers that they are, um, wanting and needing right now. It will also have an entrance on the rear. Um, as you can see, there's your little aerial of that with your ag zoning, kind of sits on its parcel all to itself in a wooded area with some residential around it, a little further away. Once again, the future land use is consistent as well with that, a low-density residential. And there you see the existing footprint, and then the proposed addition there. And then staff is recommending two conditions be attached. Um, the, uh, zag also recommended those same two conditions. And that would be that the proposed construction and sanctuary shall be within general conformity with the site plan submitted and dated October twenty-ninth, two, twenty-twenty-one, which you just saw there. And that the new addition materials shall match the materials of that main sanctuary.
All right, is the applicant here? Is the applicant here? Please come forward.
Good afternoon, Commissioner.
I'm sorry, before you start, would you like to reserve any minutes for a rebuttal so, should somebody be against your request? Usually two or three minutes.
Yes.
It's up to you.
Yes.
Uh, put eight minutes on the, on the time list. Eight minutes, please.
Again?
Yes.
Oh, good afternoon, Commissioner and Commissioners. Um, yes, I'm Jerry Robinson, uh, in representation of Macedonia AME Church. Uh, just as was spoken before, we're looking to do an expansion to our existing, um, facility. Uh, the expansion is roughly two thousand square foot, as you say. The expansion is for classroom participation, which also will house a new pastor office space. It will also house a new conference room, which seat up to about sixteen personnel, uh, and a new ADA bathroom. Uh, that is a, um, American Disability Act bathroom that will house, uh, females and males. Uh, we're also looking to do, um, a front entrance facial, which is the second addition part of this, uh, project, uh, that shows the actual front entrance of the church in itself. Uh, the whole facility will seat up to approximately sixty-three personnel. Uh, it is much-used space that we're looking to have because we have three, uh, mobile trailer units on the facility, and those units are actually antiquated, and they need to be dismantled and dismo- and removed. And so that is the purpose for this expansion that we're requesting for in the form of a conditional use permit to be in compliance with the zoning. Uh, once we can satisfy the requirements for the conditional use permit, then we'll be able to permit for construction of this project. That completes my remarks.
Thank you, sir. All right, is there anybody here who would like to speak in favor of applicant's request? Anybody like to speak in favor of, this is a, um, public hearing? Anybody like to speak in favor of? All right, anybody like to speak in opposition to? Anybody in opposition? Okay. Commissioner Anderson?
I move that we accept Mr. Jerry Robinson's request for a conditional use permit for the expansion, uh, expansion of the existing place of worship.
With? With?
Uh, with the conditions.
Yes.
Are you in agreeance with the conditions?
I am in agreeance with the condition. It's basically the existing material has to be in likeness for the new, uh, structure that we're putting on site.
That is correct.
That is correct.
The motions to approve with the conditions, is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Here and now, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Here and now, those in favor of aye. Aye, opposed, it's unanimous.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
The next zoning item is item number thirty-eight, B O C twenty-two oh one dash zero one seven six, which is a future land use map amendment from mixed-use density to high-density residential for senior living apartments.
Thank you. So these next two are actually concurrent applications. Um, so I'll just give you a little background on both of them and then break them down a little. The first one is-
We need to take them both separately.
Yeah, you'll take them both separately, but I'm gonna give you the layout of what they're requesting, if that's okay. So the first one is for applicant, the Grove Creek Ventures LLC, and they are requesting a future land use amendment from the mixed-use density to the high-density residential district. And this will allow for the construction of a three-story building that will contain ninety units of senior living apartments. More specifically, fifty of those units will be one-bedrooms units, and forty of those will be two-bedroom units. Um, the amenities that will be offered in this are a community garden, outdoor recreation, and a pavilion with grills. Um, right here, you'll see that property highlighted there, um, in the red. And then the future land use map. And then that is the site plan, which will show the overall development that they are proposing there. And a staff recommendation, um, concurrent with zag recommendation is approval on the future land use map amendment.
All right, is the applicant or representative present? Please come forth. Okay, before you begin, uh, do, would you like to reserve any minutes for a rebuttal?
Yes.
How many?
Uh, it shouldn't take us more than two minutes to present.
All right, put eight on the, uh, clock, please. Please proceed, sir.
Yeah, so good afternoon. My name is Devin Blankenship. This is my partner, Paul Smith. Uh, he is with North, our Grove Creek. I'm with Talent Development. Um, we're proposing this change to build, as, uh, lady mentioned, a ninety-unit senior living deal for fifty-five-plus residents. Uh, as mentioned, it's ninety units, forty, uh, one-bed, or, yeah, forty-one bedrooms, fifty-two bedrooms. That's likely to change once we figure out a few other things in the market study. Um, uh, it will have amenities, uh, such as kitchen islands, um, L B P flooring throughout, um, a high-end community space for community gathering and events, an outdoor pavilion with grills, outdoor community gardens, and we are looking into an outdoor, maybe shuffleboard court, uh, or some type of gaming, uh, center outside as well. Um, we've already met with, we're going through the various stages of the rezoning process, which is, if I could go back to that site plan. That's why you see here that our entry is where it is. We have a secondary fire entry, as requested by the fire marshal. Um, we are also meeting all the requirements for the Highway one thirty-eight overlay. This will be, I believe, the first development, once it starts to be within that overlay. As part of that, we'll be adding the sidewalks you see here along one thirty-eight, which is planned south, and the sidewalks, both five feet in width, along Scotts Road here to the north. Um, it's not shown here, but so with Highway one thirty-eight being a D O T road, it will likely have the D cell and X L lane, uh, that was mentioned earlier. Outside of that, we will have a covered entry, uh, uh, covered for our tenants and for future tenant parking. And we'll also have electronic vehicle charging stations within our parking lot. I think outside of there, I'd like to take any questions you might have.
Okay, this is a public hearing, so is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of applicant's request? Anyone like to speak in favor of?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, may I say something?
Would you like to speak in favor of?
It looks that way.
Come on up.
I got in here a little, excuse me, Mickey Garber, Unincorporated Rex, Georgia. I got in here a little late. This is for a senior facility?
Fifty-five in order.
Okay, I'm not quite old enough to get in yet. Anyway, uh, as I stated earlier, this one thirty-eight cor, uh, corridor is a major transportation area throughout the county. And I mentioned about the seniors don't drive and have to take the bus. So therefore, I, I would like the facility there because we have a, uh, older population, and I'm for it, but I'd like to add that an area for the bus stop be expanded into their development so as not to hinder traffic flow, even though it is a four-lane road. If you stop any one lane, you are stopping the flow of traffic. Thank you. I am in favor of their development.
Anybody else like to speak in favor of? Anybody opposed to? Anybody want to speak in opposition to? Commissioner Hamburg?
Yes, hi. I have several things, but they've all been answered, but they were not on the, uh, agenda. Uh, like the age, you know, I know we discussed that, and, uh, so I'm glad you brought that up, about the fifty-five and up, fifty-five plus, about the, uh, D cell lane, which should handle, uh, what was just discussed regarding the buses and all, that, uh, they could, because the, uh, model does go back and forth on one thirty-eight. Instead of going down into the development, if, uh, we can work it out with-
Correct. Well, during our permitting, permitting process, and I've done this a number of times, we'll be working with Georgia D O T. Since it is an existing bus stop there, we'll likely have to plan for the relocation of that, put along the new sidewalk, and address all that. And that, and they will for sure require the D cell lane there.
Okay, and I'm glad you said that about the sidewalks.
Yes, ma'am.
Can we have the wide sidewalks?
Uh, per the overlay, the Highway one thirty-eight is required to be five feet. And that, that's the, the wide.
Is that, um, okay.
Yeah, I believe a regular sidewalk's four feet, so this is five feet.
Five, okay, okay.
Then I'll also include, you know, separate sections for seating with benches. It will be fully lit, um, with pedestrian lighting and everything.
Okay, you mentioned the amenities. I have that on my list.
And the pool table in the, uh, community room, of course. Gotta have that.
Something we were forgetting.
I'm not gonna forget that pool table.
That will be in the community room, okay. Okay, I, I just didn't see it. When I was reading, I'm thinking, wait a minute, we missed, you know, several things here.
Can I add one thing?
Yeah, what's that?
Uh, y'all mentioned several times importance of hiring local, and we're committed to hiring local Clayton County peoples, our subs, to build, I mean, the budget's extensive for this, uh, close to twenty million dollars. So we have made a commitment to hire local people because what's the point of building a new community if you're hiring everybody outside? So, uh, if, if they're available, we're trying to hire local.
Wow, thank you. We appreciate that.
Now that you say that, you know, we have people to come and tell us that, but we never see the results of that. So if we could have some kind of, uh, reporting or something, if you all let us know, you know, that, uh, you, you have so many positions open and all, and, and let us know, and we can put the word out and try and help, uh, you know, recruit people from Clayton County. So thank you for that. Entrance and exits. What did we say on that?
So the, this site plan is the result from meeting with the various departments. Um, our entrance is where it is, so typically Highway one thirty-eight would require two entrances. Uh, but with how that gas line comes through, I can't fit two entrances and meet the D O T required separation of entrances. So the fire marshal asked us to place a secondary entrance at the top. This is strictly for fire lanes. Um, so it will just be the minimal twenty-eight-foot width to fit a fire truck, and it will have fire bollards of which, of course, the fire department can unlock should there be, uh, the need to. So it is just the one main entrance on Highway one thirty-eight.
And, and the one that the fire department is talking about, that goes into the other neighborhood, is that correct?
Not into a neighborhood. It, it connects on Scotts Road.
Well, Scotts Road goes in-
Well, yes.
I mean, that's good. That's, that's a good thing, because I would not want that to be, uh, a problem for those residents coming out on Scott Road, because we've had, uh, you know, accidents and all that already, Scott Road and, uh, one thirty-eight.
Gotcha. Yeah, no, our tenants will not be using that northern.
Okay.
And we talked to the, the owner of the property adjacent from the entrance, and she was all for the property.
Okay, let's see, um. Okay, how many bedrooms again?
Uh, ninety bed, well, ninety units, uh, mix of ones and twos.
Okay, but you, somebody gave a number of so many one-bedrooms.
So the building layout comes with, I think it was fifty-one bedrooms and forty-two bedrooms. Uh, that's just, it's always subject to change a little bit. Once you finalize that building layout, the stacks of units always change, so.
I'm just trying to get us to say this, so people won't be asking me. You know, they can hear this and, and, and know that, you know, how many bedrooms and all, they'll ask me anyway. Um, let's see, was something else? Building materials for the, uh, project.
Yep, yep, so, um,
What's being used?
There were some elevations. I'm not sure if they made it into this presentation, but, uh, it, the, the facades are going to be, it's gonna be thirty percent brick on each facade. The remainder will be hardy siding, so fiber cement siding. There won't be any vinyl siding. Uh, we use-
Did we have something, uh, samples?
We, we had submitted it. I'm not sure, we obviously didn't put this piece together. Oh, see, they're on the back there.
No, I, I wanted to see something of how it would look.
They don't have it on the screen. Do you want to see it?
No.
Get that from her. Yeah or no? Yes or no?
Uh, no.
But every piece of siding material that is put up is meant to last thirty years from a warranty standpoint. So we don't put up a piece of material on there that doesn't come with a warranty of thirty years.
Okay, I wanted something that the public could see, how it would look.
And, and I, I think the committee members are such, have that electronically, but if not, I'm happy to send it to you directly.
Well, I really want it for the hearing here tonight. Y'all don't have anything?
I don't have it on the slide.
That would be nice, a good selling point, you know, would have been. I think, unless someone else can think of something else, I believe, oh, parking spaces. How many parking spaces will you have for the residents, and how many for their visitors?
So, well, we won't designate specifically for residents versus visitors, but we like to have, um, on a property this size, I think our ratio is, uh, at least one per bedroom. I don't have the site plan in front of me, so I can't tell you what it is, but there's plenty of room for us to have, uh, probably a one to one-point-two parking ratio per unit. So that, that's allows for each bedroom, essentially. If you have a two-bedroom, they're gonna be able to park two cars there. And then on top of that, we like to do an additional ten percent just for visitors. And I'll include parking spots for future tenants, uh, for management staff.
Say that again.
All right, so it's roughly around a hundred and fifty spaces. So if you do the one bedrooms, you get one unit, and then the two bedrooms get two, you're looking about a hundred and thirty, a hundred and thirty-five, and then you get another ten percent over that, which puts you somewhere around a hundred and fifty spaces, plus some, somewhat extra visitor parking. And one of the conditions that was, uh, for approval was we had to have some E V parking for electric charging stations. So part of that's included in the parking.
Commissioner, I just wanted to remind you that right now, the only thing before you is a future land use map amendment? Your next issue is dealing with some-
But, uh, you know, since they threw it out there, I figured let me just go on with it.
Sure, I just wanted to make sure that, that when, if, once you make that motion, if you make a motion to approve, that it's not including all of the things they're talking about as far as parking and all those things, because we're only with, right now, we're only dealing with the future land, land use map amendment.
Well, this way we don't have to discuss it in the next. We, we're done with it. Thank you. Okay, I believe that, is it, or if I think of something on the next item, so, okay.
Your motion?
Uh, yes, I, uh, move that we accept, um, this recommendation from, um, staff and zoning.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Any questions? Here and now, those in favor of aye. Aye, opposed, it's unanimous. Thanks.
Perfect. So the next one is the concurrent rezoning. So, uh, this one is the official request to rezone it from G B, which is General Business, to the R M, which is your multifamily residential. And if it's okay, we'll just move right along. Um, the staff recommendation, we actually have three conditions, and zag recommended those same conditions. The first one will be the proposed development shall have no more than ninety units. The development plan shall comply within general conformity to the site plan provided by the applicant, dated January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two. Item number two will be struck. It's actually already built into number one with the number of units. Um, number two will become a minimum of three parking spaces, shall be designated for the electrical vehicle charging stations, which they alluded to previously. And then a minimum of two elevators will be installed for the residence use.
So just for clarification purposes, number two, there's only three conditions?
Yes, we can strike number two. It's actually already built into number one, having no more than ninety units.
Okay. Sir?
Yeah, so hello again. Um, what she, what she said?
Yes, yes, please, section time.
Two minutes, so, but are you good at this?
I, unless you guys have more questions, I'll save them.
We're going to the public hearing. Is there anybody here like to speak in favor of applicant's request? Anybody in favor to? Anyone opposed? Commissioner Hamburg?
Uh, yes, with everything that was discussed previously, and I'll hold true on this, so, um, with that, I recommend approval.
With?
With the three conditions. Do we need to read them out again?
No, she's, she read them first time. But you do agree with the conditions?
Absolutely.
Okay.
All right, the motions for approval with the three conditions as, uh, read by, uh, planning staff. Ms. Kurzick, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Franklin. Any questions?
Well, hold on. I see a look on your face. What's that about?
Oh, no.
Oh, okay. Don't do that. Make you think we missing something.
Get used, get used. All right, any questions? Those in favor of aye. Aye, opposed, it's unanimous. Thank you. Mr. Reed, do we need executive session?
Yes, on personnel and litigation. Yes, personnel litigation.
There are motion for personnel and litigation. I'll make the motions. There a second? Second, those in favor of aye. Aye, opposed, it's unanimous. All right, everyone, have a good evening. All right, Madam Clerk, you ready? All right, motion to reconvene. So move. Uh, second, those in favor of aye. Aye, opposed, it's unanimous. Uh, Ms. Allen?
Thank you, Chairman. And good evening, Chairman, Vice Chair, Board of Commissioners, and of course, good evening to our Clayton County citizens. Per Civil Service Rule five dot two oh one, the starting salary of an employee shall normally be placed at the minimum step of a salary range for the classification. However, advanced step appointments can be made based on the Board of Commissioners' approval. Therefore, on behalf of the Office of the Solicitor General, Human Resources is requesting to hire the following employees at an advanced step, as allowed for in civil service. The first employee is Renee Roberts. We're requesting to hire Ms. Roberts as a Senior Solicitor General II at grade thirty-one, step six. Total compensation is a hundred and one thousand, eight sixty-one. Budgetary impact for B Y twenty-two is five hundred and ninety-six dollars. Budgetary impact for B Y twenty-three is three thousand, four hundred and twenty-two dollars. We would also like to hire Crystal Boudro, and that's B O U D R E A U X, for the record, as a Senior Solicitor General II at grade thirty-one, step fourteen. Total compensation is a hundred and eleven thousand, six ninety-three. Budgetary impact for B Y twenty-two is twenty-two ninety-seven. Budgetary impact for B Y twenty-three is thirteen thousand, two seventy-two. For the record, the total B Y twenty-two impact is a cost of two thousand, eight hundred and ninety-three dollars. For the record, the total cost for B Y twenty-three is- For the record, the total cost for BY twenty-three is sixteen thousand, seven hundred and sixteen dollars, and that's it.
All right, is there a motion?
Motion moved.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Issue unanimous.
Thank you all.
Mr. Reed?
Would you like me to take both together?
Please.
All right, first is, there's two property damage claims in which the county will receive proceeds. The first is related to an accident that occurred between Romiko Howard Progressive Premier Insurance Company, in which the insurance company will pay the county twenty-two thousand, five hundred and twenty-eight dollars and forty-one cents relating to an accident that occurred on about July twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-one, at Orne Riverdale, Georgia, resulting in property damage to the traffic signal. The second is an agreement, property damage release in the amount of sixty-six thousand, nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars and eighteen cents between the county and Exilair Construction LLC and Amerisure Mutual Insurance Company, related to an incident that occurred on September twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-one, which resulted in damage to a fiber line in Hampton, Georgia, and authorized the Chief Financial Officer to amend the budget to reflect both of these property damage claims.
Is there a motion?
So move.
Second. Second. Second by Commissioner Davis, those, any questions? All right, those in favor, aye. Aye. Opposed. Issue unanimous. Motion to adjourn. So move. Now second, those in favor, aye. Aye. Opposed. Issue unanimous.